This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, April the 18th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor George Wright, Archet Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you today and we're so thankful to be in a country that's free and a city, Father, where we can do the things that we need to do and, Father, without fear of repercussion. And, Father, we thank you for this city council and all that they do, Father, to work together for One Mobile. Father, we want to make sure that all the people in this city, Father, know that they all are important. And, God, we're thankful that as we come together today to take part in this form of city government, that, Father, you would just touch each one. You would be with each person making decisions, Father, and they would make decisions in a way that would be pleasing to you. Father, again, we ask for blessings on our city. We ask for blessings on each person here. And, Father, we ask it all in the precious name of our Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn. Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, please at this time put it on the off or the barbed wire position. The off or the barbed wire position. Anyone have any type of electronic device, please at this time put on the off or the barbed wire position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must sign in to the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and pertaining to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there has to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decor, there would be no undue applause and a public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good to see everyone here. We appreciate you taking time to come out and join us. I have a couple of announcements, a proclamation, and then we're going to recognize our Fire Fighter of the Month and a Officer of the Month. The announcement has to do with the closing of McGregor Avenue between Dolphin Street and Airport Boulevard. That will occur beginning Monday, May 1st. There will be a major road project. It's a complete street rebuild. This project's been in the works for over 15 years from the planning and design and the accumulation of the funding for that. Twenty-three million dollars being funded by a combination of federal, state, and local dollars. The project will be coordinated by the City of Mobile in conjunction with ALDOT. It's a complete street rebuild, somewhat like we did on Broad Street with new sidewalks, new, everything underground is all be completely done, then in partnership with all of our utility partners to make sure that it's handled properly. The road will be slightly widened because those that travel that area know that when you travel west on Dolphin Street, turns south on McGregor, going to Airport Boulevard every afternoon, it's a tremendous gridlock right there. So, the hope is, is that we will relieve that gridlock. I'd also say about that project that we recognize that with all the construction that we have going on, especially on Ziegler Boulevard, that our east-west corridors are very, very congested. In conversation yesterday with the contractor on the Ziegler Boulevard rebuild, we're going to do our best to open up Ziegler from Municipal Park to University Boulevard so that the route from traveling west on Spring Hill Avenue to Ziegler, and if you want to turn left on University, you'll be able to do that, and all that road construction hopefully will be completed at that point. Of course, Ziegler Boulevard completion is a couple of years, 18 months or so down the road. Anyway, we've learned a few things as we've rebuilt the northern end of McGregor about people cutting through neighborhoods. We're very sensitive to people that try to drive through the neighborhoods like they would drive on major fur fires, not paying attention to stop signs and so forth. And so, you can rest assured that we will be out there to protect those neighborhoods, the children and the families that live there. So, we're asking you to just please cooperate with us. We know it's an inconvenience, but we just know that these are things that must be done if we're going to continue to grow the city. So, appreciate your patience and your understanding. Again, that begins April, excuse me, May 1st, and the projected timeline is two years, but I'm surely hoping for something less than that. We're going to have a national, what we call Drug Takeback. The Mobile Police Department will host its annual Takeback Drug Initiative where citizens can bring in their unused or expired prescription medication to the front of the police headquarters for safe disposal. We would hope that you would participate in that. That would be Saturday, this coming Saturday, April 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the police headquarters. Feel free to bring any of your unused prescription drugs. Proclamation I have to read has to do with Earth Day, and so, I'm going to call out the names of various groups who we think are represented here. And when I call the name of your group, if you would just stand as I call them out, and just remain standing, and after you all standing, I'll read the proclamation, and then Casey Callaway will make a couple of remarks. So, Alabama Coastal Foundation, Mobile Bay NEP, Dog River Clear Water Revival, Gulf Coast Creation Care, Student Conservation Association, Mobile Bay Keeper, Keep Mobile Beautiful, Love Your Community, The Peninsula of Mobile, the Mobile Environmental Justice Action Committee, Partners for Environmental Progress, the Mobile Bay Sierra Club, and the Nature Conservancy. And if we've missed anyone else, you let me know who you are, we'll recognize you too. All right? So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the first worldwide Earth Day celebration was in 1970, where 20 million Americans rallied for a healthy, sustainable environment and recognized the importance of every person in preserving our natural resources, and whereas all life forms on Earth have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment, and as caretakers of the planet, we all have an obligation to change human behaviors that contribute to environmental degradation to preserve the Earth's beauty and natural resources. And whereas many local community members, schools, businesses, and environmental organizations in the City of Mobile are working together in the interest of the planet to inspire intergenerational participation through local actions and global environmental consciousness. And whereas the City of Mobile proudly recognizes all who participate in Earth Day for their dedication to taking a proactive role in shaping the future of our environment and protecting the City of Mobile's and the world's precious natural resources and various wildlife, now therefore, I, William S. Simpson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2023, as Earth Day in the City of Mobile." Thank y'all for your service. Thank you.
I'll just say a quick word. Aaron told me not to say this. Just to say a few words, Aaron told me not to say this, but my very first action doing environmental work ever was Earth Day 1990. I was the Southeastern Regional College Campus Coordinator to celebrate the 20th anniversary. My goal in life has always been to make sure that Earth Day became a day where we celebrate these people. Y'all probably know this, but they work harder during the month of April than they do all year long to make sure that people are aware individually because their work does not happen just on April 22nd. It happens every single day of the year. And this is just a small representation of the number of people who work for these organizations as their job-job, but also the volunteers, the reach and the effort that they all make to make our community a better place to live, to work, and to play. So, I would love one more round of applause for these fabulous people.
So, after we do the police, the Officer of the Month and the Fire Fighter of the Month, I'll come out and they'll take a picture on the steps. Okay? So, Chief Lanning, you're within the aisle there.
Thank you. Good morning. So, again, thankful for this time today to recognize one of our own. We're proud to recognize firefighter, fire service driver, excuse me, John Michael Trenier as the March 20, 23 firefighter of the month. He began his service in 2016, promoted to the rank of driver in May of 2022. Driver Trenier certainly has a servant's heart, and he's had a member of, a family member on this Mobile Fire Rescue Department since 1819. So, he's definitely continuing.
Say that one more time.
He's had a family member on the Mobile Fire Rescue Department since 1819, and his dad, his dad currently still. His dad's still in the department as a deputy chief at the Crichton Station. And interestingly enough, I told John Michael that he's got to get busy having children if he wants to continue on that tradition. But we recognize him today for creating and implementing a mentorship program involving firefighters and law enforcement officers called Brothers in Blue. Brothers in Blue became an opportunity for local first responders to connect with and inspire high-risk youth through community-based mentoring. Do you remember during National Mentoring Month in January, the Brothers in Blue officially partnered with Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Central Gulf Coast, allowing for even greater expansion and growth in mentoring? And he did inform us this morning that he has a meeting soon to take on his first mentorship. So, it's not only for his continued work every day on the department, but also extremely proud to see our people take a vested interest in impacting the department and the community in multiple different ways. So, on behalf of the department and the city, we'd like to thank you and congratulations for being Fire Fighter of the Month.
Chief Penn.
Mayor, staff, council, thank you for this opportunity. Before you today is Officer Sarah Dearman. I'm proud to stand here today and talk about her accomplishments, but more importantly, some of the things, 150 calls for service for the month of March. In conjunction with that, she made 78 arrests, and most of those are street-level type crimes that lends themselves to larger crimes. She works in the South Side in the First Precinct, and I think we're honored and privileged for at least in recent memory that this is the first time that we have a female officer for Officer of the Month for the month of March 2023, and to that, she deserves to be recognized.
Again, good morning to the council and to the audience. We're going to present a proclamation this morning. One of the former council members supposed to have done this, but I have a privilege this morning in doing this for them. We have a proclamation and it reads, "Whereas the Administrative Professional Day was created in 1945 to attract workers to the industries after new technology entered the business place. And whereas future leaders work and provide workforce development to young parents by assisting them with the transition into the administrative industry. Their mission is to mentor low-to-moderating income individuals to overcome unemployment, poverty, and the outcomes thereof. And whereas Amazing Admins is an event created by future leaders working that will include in a war for office to celebrate the Administrative Professional Day and the admins of the City of Mobile. And whereas Admins, excuse me, Admins Admins will honor 12 administrative professionals who will serve as mentors for the Future Leaders Working Job Development Program, Blue Ocean Admin Academy. Now therefore, we, the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 26, 2023, as Admins Admins Day, Amazing Admins Day in Mobile, Alabama, and urge all our citizens to join us in this momentous occasion done at the City of Mobile, Alabama, on this 18th day of April 2023. Congratulations."
Good morning, City Council, Mayor Simpson, Administration, and all that are here. I just want to say thank you so much and also acknowledge our sponsors. Without them, this wouldn't be possible. So, thank you to Evonik, Mobile Chamber, Builders and Backers, the City of Mobile, and Innovation Portal. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda.
Slow move.
Second.
And promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave the noise ordinance on May the 5th on Moffett Road, April 20th in Beenville Square, April 22nd on North Hamilton Street, April the 29th on Columbus Avenue.
Slow move.
Second.
And promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to dezone property located at 4570, 4580, 4590, Shipyard Road, from B-3 and B-5 to B-5.
This opens a public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? You may come down to the podium and state your name and your address. Again, this opens up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present? Is anyone? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 1704 Butler's Street, 1716 La Grande Drive, 1815 Pleasant Avenue, 1570 Orange Street, 1260 Pecan Street, 1109 State Street, and to fix the cost for demolition of structures at 2413 Cone Street, 2721 Harper Avenue, 106 Michael Donald Avenue, 324 Lexington Avenue, 1103 Jamon Circle, 2620 Halls Mill Road, 801 1/2 Kentucky Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
This opens the public hearing for this particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? You may come down to the podium and state your name and your address. Again, anyone present that would like to address the council on these said items? If not, these particular public hearings are closed.
Public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to The Way to Go, Inc., to operate a sedan and shuttle service.
This opens the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? You may come down to the podium and state your name and your address. Is anyone present? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Suzanne Schwartz.
Old lady with artificial hips and knees has a hard time making those stairs. Good morning, Councilwoman, President Small, Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Suzanne Schwartz, and I reside at 360 McDonald Avenue, and I'm a proud and active resident of Council District 2. Is that good? Okay. All right. With me at the podium today is a woman that needs no introduction, Mary Ann Merchant. Mary Ann is the president-elect of the League of Women Voters of Mobile, and she will take the gavel May 1st. Also with me is Mary Ann Hall Wilson, past president of the League of Women Voters and the chair of the Collier Award Committee. In the audience, we do have members of our board and our membership, which I would ask for them to stand. We have over 100 people in the City of Mobile working tirelessly at the local level and at the state level to defend democracy and empower voters, which brings us to the reason we're here today. In 2016, the League of Women Voters of Mobile established the Martha Rivas Collier Civic Engagement Award to recognize individuals and organizations that have furthered the cause of public participation in important community causes and issues. The award is named in honor of one of our beloved longtime members who passed away in 2015. Martha left a lasting impact on her community with her many contributions. For the very first time, this year's award will go to an organization, the Mobile City Council, in recognition of the leadership demonstrated, excuse me, by seeking full public participation in the redistricting process. Redistricting, which embodies the principles of one person, one vote, goes to the foundation of the democratic process. The resolution passed by the city council established procedures to enhance public participation by having meetings in each district and scheduling those meetings at times that were more accessible to working clients. The council's outreach to diverse range of citizens helped build public trust, elevated the discussion, and increased public confidence that the decision-making process was fair. In conclusion, we hope this award will not only inspire others, but also highlight the crucial role of public involvement in the democratic process. Thank you very much for your service and all you do for our city.
We thank you all so much, and again, congratulations to Mary Ann. We would like to take a picture with you all if y'all.
We would love that.
If y'all can just come up here with us if possible.
Thank you.
And we also need to thank Mary Ann for her willingness to come back and help us out occasionally, including in the upcoming special election. So, Mary Ann, you may have left for a little while, but you'll be back.
I would just, Mr. President.
Yes.
I would just like to thank the League of Women Voters for this very important award. It's, sometimes, you know, sometimes up here, we think we're kind of laboring in the vineyards without, without much recognition, except negative recognition. And it's nice every now and then to get a pat on the back. We really appreciate that from the League of Women Voters. The redistricting process was long and time-consuming, but I think it ended up in a way that benefited everybody. And, Mary Ann, I'd just like to say retirement seems to agree with you. You look great.
Thank you, ladies, again. Madam Clerk?
Carl Battles.
Mayor Simpson, county board commissioners, councilpeople, appreciate this opportunity to allow me to speak in person to request.
Mr. Battles, can we just get your full name and your address, please?
Carl Edward Battles, 964 Sunset Avenue, Mobile, Alabama, 36605.
Thank you.
District 2. Anyway, I have for several years have been trying to have junk, abandoned vehicles removed from property adjacent to 964 Sunset. I've had no results from multiple attempts. I have certified return receipt letters that I've sent to various agencies in the city. Been totally ignored. Many years I've been trying this, so 1120 is when I started to start some kind of documentation. I have phone numbers, 251-208-7151, et cetera, et cetera. I've called enough messages, nobody found a time or desire to respond. I've written letters, Mobile County Environmental Enforcement Office, certified return receipt 16 November. Didn't even get a phone call to say, "Go away." I had a code enforcement officer come out to the site, took pictures, gave me a case number, EON344. End of story. Nothing. My sister went to a community meeting, district meeting, 15 February 2022, two years later, presented the same concern, received a letter from somebody who finally took the time to respond to us, the Executive Secretary of the City of Mobile City Council Office, stating that they would have two people, I won't call their names yet, looking to it and to notify the councilmen of what they found. End of story. My sister, in her frustration as well, and I'm not angry, I'm just frustrated, and I'm disappointed. So, take it as you see fit. Even sent a letter to Mayor Simpson's office. Nobody's responding. The only time I get a response is when I called to speak to you guys in person. Evidently, there's something fancy that nobody wants to touch this thing. What is it that is so frightening that nobody wants to touch it? Am I too small to be responded to? Somebody talk to me. I'd really like to hear the answer right now, and I don't want any more of these empty promises and nice pats on the back attaboys. Please, what does it take to get this job done? Please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Battles. Thank you so much, Mr. Battles, for coming down. Mr. Carroll, would you like to?
Yeah, Mr. President, I can. I got a call on Friday night, I believe, probably the first one of substance after the response that you received in February of '22 that came from me. The request was made at a community meeting that was held at Harmon Park, and in turn, the request was turned in. When I turned in that request, I realized at that time that the request had gone back over three years, maybe even four. So, it goes back well before I even started trying to address this issue. There was some response to this issue that I've noticed in the reports where some of it had been cleaned up, but it appears from what's in the report where it had been cleaned up that there is more now there than when it was cleaned up the first time. So, it appears as if though someone tried and then dumped additional stuff on the property. I actually came by the property Friday night after I got a call, quote, "from a reporter" that asked me to do an interview on that site. I told that reporter, "We would be glad to help in any way that we can." Since that time, the gentleman up at the top of the steps has been contacted. His name is David Dokkenbach, and has been asked to respond to your request immediately to see what we can do. This morning in pre-council, it was discussed at length about ordinances about junk cars and things that don't move, that are visible to the eye to the neighbors. There will be somebody out to enforce the code. We're going to move as quickly as we possibly can on this. Again, if you would, please continue to keep me directly informed because I haven't been over the time since I made the original request, I don't think you or anyone of the property have emailed me directly or talked to me directly, so I'm going to do this. My telephone number is 251-404-4107. Now, I'll be glad to stop by anytime that you ask me to come see or help or address or help you address any issue that there is, but right now, the request has been made again, and we will work very quickly to help resolve this in the best manner that we can under the laws and codes that we have.
Thank you very much. And with due respect, I just want to ask, this is not going to take three more years.
Well, now that I'm looking, you know, I tend to get results pretty quick, you know. There hasn't been, like I said, a follow-up with me. There are some things right around a corner from you on Tuttle and other streets that we've been addressing, and also on Canal that we've been addressing. So, if we can address those quickly in a proper manner, I'm pretty sure we can help you. Now, with the, I mean, you got a mess out there. You got a concrete truck, you got an abandoned trailer that somebody lived in, you've got some cars, so there's some things out there that are going to take some effort, and it may even require a demolition team to get some of that stuff out of there. So, as we move forward.
Okay, sir, I appreciate you. Please don't make it wait too long.
Yes.
Because I'm really trying to not be silly here.
Yes.
Okay. And I've been promised, I mean, eloquent speeches and promises, never a god darn thing been done, and I'm tired of it.
Yes. Well, this is the first time that you've actually talked to me.
Then I'm finished.
Let's do what it takes to get it done.
Okay, because, I mean, seriously. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Battles. Madam Clerk.
Fred Wheeler.
I am Fred Wheeler, Secretary of West Mobile Annexation Committee and reside at 8405 Sterling Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36695. Council President Small, council members, Mr. Mayor and staff. Since the mayor announced plans to attempt to annex West Mobile based on the requests from many citizens in West Mobile, organizations such as Stand Up Mobile, Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance, Mobile County Democratic Executive Committee, Southern Poverty Law Center, and ACLU have come to oppose an attempt at gaining a referendum. Where these organizations, where were these organizations when the city council threatened to remove public safety from an area that has paid taxes from the police jurisdiction but also paid taxes at Airport and Schillinger's Road and other areas in proximity and annexed by the city's efforts in 2007 and Theodore Timmer's Corner in 2008? Sam Jones administration did include most of the population because they only wanted the taxes that come with the business corridors attached to predominantly African-American communities to whom they were made empty promises. Evidence of this comes from citizens and council members about promises made and not kept by the administration. West Mobile citizens have been extremely patient. We have watched our tax dollars spent to the benefit of the citizens of the city of Mobile washes improvements to parks and other areas inside the city or improve without our voice heard. Taxation without representation. West Mobile citizens do not have an SPLC or an ACLU or other political organizations. All we have are the people in our communities. Let us vote. Residents of West Mobile have not asked or demanded anything above what citizens of the city receive now. Members of prior councils have deprived the ability of the city to absorb additional neighborhoods in West Mobile. The recent PFM study not only quells those concerns but should excite those who oppose allowing the referendum to go forward. Let us vote. Let's get excited about the additional revenue that could do the very thing that constituents are currently asking their councilpersons to do, which is provide more resources in underserved communities instead of sowing seeds of destruction, division, touting the much ballyhoo voter age population when the percentage of African-Americans who voted in the last city election were far below the percentage that they seek. We support Stand Up Mobile and their efforts to register African-American voters. We are vigorously opposed to fitting African-Americans against West Mobileians to do it. I quote from Stand Up Mobile's Facebook site, "There has been an effort underway now for years to build support in white neighborhoods in West Mobile to annex into the city. Our neighborhoods are diverse, vibrant community of many peoples." Finally, I've heard many assumptions here in the past few months. Most assume West Mobileians to vote to join the city.
Mr. Wheeler? Yeah, we appreciate you coming down. Just one correction. You mentioned the Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance. They did not come down here as a group and oppose or was pro-anexation. Maybe one or two members may have, but not that particular group and everything, but we appreciate you for coming down.
I need to finish, please.
Your time is.
I'll grant it.
One minute.
So, finally, I've heard assumptions from the past few months, most assume West Mobile will vote to join the city. I wish I had that level of assuredness. Some are assuming the citizens of King Branch will do likewise, yet I've heard nothing from their neighborhoods, nor have I heard anyone opposing their annexation. I've heard last week, some assumed that Mobile will continue to wait. I caution the council, don't assume too much. Let us vote. Thank you.
Betty Shen.
Good morning, all. My name is Betty Shen. I reside at 36 MacPhillips Avenue, Mobile, Alabama, 36604. It appears that the proposed study on annexation or the impact of the proposed annexation is not an accurate study. There are 25 pages summarizing making broad statements by the mayor's staff with little to no backup or due diligence to determine whether the statements from that study are true and accurate. Any casual observer traveling neighborhoods in Mobile can readily see the lack of attention with done through city services with overgrown lots, dilapidated houses that could possibly cause catastrophic injury to some curious children looking for adventures. The needs of city services are addressed to this council on a weekly basis. Dilapidated houses, piles of garbage and trash, cracked sidewalks, making walking dangerous for people of all ages and all levels of physical fitness. We have weekly complaints or excuses from the council regarding the problems associated with hiring adequate staff to service the needs of the city in providing the services from public safety with police and fire to personnel for public works and keeping areas around the city of Mobile free from trash, leaves, garbage, and unsightly debris. Taking care of current problems appears to be almost overwhelming. Why would addressing or adding annexation without the help that we currently need help? My question today is how many more city staff members will be needed above the existing backlog of 160 to 170 employees from various departments to service current, to provide current services? That should be provided by the city of Mobile. Citizens of Mobile need details. We have paid for several studies, and what I'm requesting today is transparency, transparency, and more transparency so we can make intelligent decisions on this question of annexation. Thank you.
Darlene Martin. Martin?
Good morning. My name is Darlene Martin, and I live at 4411 Cross Street in Africa Town Community. Thank you for this opportunity. Please forgive me for being so squeaky, but I have lungitis, but this is very important to me. The recent survey study on the impact of proposed annexation of the city of Mobile does not seem to be a study at all. It appears to be 25 pages summarized of broad statements made by the mayor's staff with little or no, excuse me, with little or no diligence to determine whether those statements are true. If we are going to make such a monumental decision, changing our city forever, we need to do it with a clear and honest understanding of the impact. Instead of broad statements that the administration does not expect this or that, or that they anticipate this or that, we need details. Nearly every week, this council discusses neighborhoods and areas that need attention from our city departments, whether issues of thieves pile up and causing dangers, dangers to seniors, or the never-ending streets we believe. This council has also talked about how far behind the city is in hiring workers we need to service the city we already have and how to retain them. This same conversation is regularly had regarding police and fire personnel, but rather than address how any of that will be addressed before taking on thousands or even tens of thousands of new residents, we have a few charts of unexplained figures. We need details. How many more city staff above the ones we currently need do we need to serve our current city and these areas properly? What are we going to do to bridge the gap and then to retain the employees, sign for police? We need details, and I hope you will get to the bottom of them and release them to the public as soon as possible. Thank you.
Chief of Staff, help to refresh my memory. How many pages is it that study was, again? Did you get that addressed?
They are correct, and the summary is about 25 pages, but there's well over 100 documents within the study.
It's 150. Mr. Wheeler? I'm going to ask the audience, would you please hold down your sidebar conversation? And again, this is a council meeting, there's 169, but the 25 have just brought it down, correct? Yes, that's the summarizing, but actually, the document is 169 pages.
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Sure that people do know that.
Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
There's been one question in both presentations, and it has to do with city personnel, and also it's asking about the possibility of annexed areas. Let me lay this out there. The current, the city currently operates within our PJ, our police jurisdiction, which is three miles beyond the city limits. Within the PJ, there are 70,000 people, 70. The annexation maybe will be a quarter of that if we're lucky or if we even do it. So, to say that we don't have the personnel, the personnel is already out there. I think it's, what, 40 police officers already out there operating, plus fire and other industry? So, we're already operating out there and servicing 70,000 people, which is more than any map or study area that we've seen. So, our cost outlay out there, I think, was 36 million or 26 million already, which we are using in the PJ with no recoverable revenue for the expenditures that we're making out there or that we're spending, other than what we're getting from the current tax base, which is extremely small to what the possibility may be depending on if or what type of annexation we do. So, the question you're asking is already answered. It's already been given, and it's there, and it's plain. We have people out there already that are working. The only thing that we have to add or would add would be garbage and trash, and that number would be considerably small compared to what we're already doing.
Madam Clerk.
Monica Lane.
Good morning, Mr. President, the council, and the mayor. I have lived in Mobile for 44 years. Prior to that, I've lived in New York, Maryland, DC.
Excuse me, one second.
I'm sorry, my address, I apologize.
Full name and address, thank you.
4020 Lloyd Station Road, Mobile, Alabama, 36693. As I was saying, I've lived in these other areas, which also included Germany and Birmingham. I've watched change in Mobile over the years, and although we have experienced much growth, that growth is now stagnated because we have expanded as much as possible on all sides. I truly believe in the vision of Mobile, and I believe that that vision is growing and annexing the western corridor is one of the best ways to do so. Mobile to me is a melting pot of Americans with different views, dreams, goals, and relationships. We should want to be all-inclusive and have no boundaries that separate us. It is my prayer that as a people, we will capture this vision of growing the city geographically and numerically. I'm a part of a small family business that's near the western border, and we enjoy having customers from all areas. I mean, all parts of the extending counties come in to us, and I just believe that expansion is absolutely necessary for our cities to continue growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Keith Moore.
Dr. Moore, present. Madam Clerk.
Titus Thorne.
Titus Thorne, 112 South Bayou Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36602. To the council, to the mayor, to the city administration. to the council, to the mayor, to the city administration. Some years ago, when I was in seminary, my Old Testament professor, Dr. Dora Embusago, she told us that one of the most selfish prayers in the Bible was the prayer of J. Bass. When J. Bass said, "Oh, God of Israel, bless me and enlarge my territory." Well, this is a selfish prayer, one because God is not making any more land, and so in order for J. Bass's territory to increase, someone else will have to decrease. So it wouldn't be about new land, about more lines. Huntsville, Montgomery, Birmingham, and Sims, it seems like they have prayed the prayer of J. Bass, and their territory has enlarged. And if we're not careful over the years, Mobile's chances to enlarge will be decreasing. And J. Bass, I don't believe that J. Bass prayed that prayer to be selfish, but he prayed it to be a blessing because he didn't want to remain the same. What does new territory mean? More land, more people, more jobs, more funding, more opportunities, and more chances for people to look like me, to have opportunity, to be exposed to different things, more opportunities for people to come behind me, to have more opportunities and chances. To our elected city officials and our leaders, you were elected by the people to do what's right for the people, and it's time now that the people support him. Annexation does not impact the current, but it affects the future, those who come behind us. And all we want is the lines to be drawn right. And then we look back over this and say, the selfish prayer is not, "Lord, bless me and enlarge my territory," but the selfish prayer would be, "Lord, keep me the same."
Thank you.
Reggie Hill.
Mike Check, one-two. It's from my good friend from District Four, Mr. John Williams. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and thank you to the two seniors of success for the future who chose to spend this time of our spring break here with our local government. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill, one-thousand-seven, Center Street. The late Senator Michael Figures coined a phrase insisting that the washing machine must have an agitator to get the clothes clean. So when the citizens who speak before this die seem agitating to those of you, reportedly placed in position to make decisions on behalf of the taxpayer, quickly remind yourself of the stains covering democracy, opportunity, and justice as it pertains to city business, popular being conducted seemingly week after week here in this very chamber for the city of Mobile. Allow us today to clean up a few things in regards to annexation, rules of procedure, and ARP spending. Let me work from within today. Section two-point-six-two of our city's rules suggests that I, along with my fellow Mobileans, wish to venture down here and address you. That couldn't be further from the truth, and this is outlined distinctly in the U.S. Constitution. It is the civic right and arguably the ethical duty of Americans to petition our government, regardless of the level, so says the First Amendment. So it would behoove this body to remove wishing from the language of our rules, because when the people present a government proposal in this fashion, it's not a wishy-washy moment. We are here in most instances presenting the concerns that have gone foul in the hamper waiting on our reported leaders as they plan new ways to spin the same old cycle. Of course, we know that a hundred-and-eighty seconds is considerably disrespectful, however, I will afford a more equitable amendment to the City Clothes Office for time's sake. Annexation, two pieces of unhappiness. Did the PFM study offer any analysis for increasing our city's population as pertains to nineteen-eighties demographics and geographical limits in the city of Mobile, meaning that we had less land and more people than we have now? And how does the PFM study justify losing residents in ten years yet doubling the revenue amount in the same time span? The proposed annexation doesn't make numerical sense either way. A teenager got into a high-speed chase with M.P.D. after hijacking a car less than forty-eight hours ago, yet we still don't have a plan to place ARP resources in the hands of the people who truly need it the most and those data-proven entities already creating the result which we eek-seek, all while having to do this far less doing the best, or nothing in place at all for that matter. So when can the people expect a plan for ARP funds? And who has the civil strength to ensure that every deserving body is given true fiscal share to be deposited punctually and without a bounty? Thank you for your input.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. County Clerk.
Ordinance is held over. Eighty-eight zero-one-eight, authorize the conveyance of city-owned vacant land south of Lloyd Station Road not now needed for public or municipal purposes.
So moved.
Second.
They're proffered moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over. Zero-one-four-zero-three, authorize sub-award grant agreement with Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Mobile area stormwater mapping and resiliency planning. Zero-eight-four-zero-four, approve purchase orders reviewed by various city departments. Zero-eight-four-zero-five, approve purchase order to routeware for garbage truck, for garbage, route tracking, sorry, software. Zero-eight-four-zero-six, approve purchase order to cone, ink, or convention center escalator maintenance, clean down, and step chain replacement. Zero-eight-four-zero-seven, approve purchase order to CDW Government LLC for iPad computer tablets. Twenty-one-four-zero-eight, authorize contract with geotechnical engineering testing for design-phase geotechnical services at the proposed Mobile Civic Center parking facility. Twenty-one-four-zero-nine, authorize contract with medical disposal systems to provide medical waste disposal services for Mobile Fire Rescue Department and Animal Shelter. Twenty-one-four-ten, authorize contract with Robert J. Baggett for expansion joint replacement at the Arthur R. Outlaw Convention Center. Thirty-seven-four-eleven, consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to comfort transport to operate a shuttle service. Sixty-four-twelve, authorize settlement agreement and release of claims.
So moved.
Second.
They're proffered moving second and in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced. Sixty-four-zero-nineteen.
Our council rules these will lay over one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced. Zero-nine-four-fifteen through thirty-one-four-forty-two.
My council rules these will lay over for one week. I'm sorry.
No.
I'm one ahead. Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second. They're proffered moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Zero-nine-four-fifteen, transfer funds from District Seven discretionary account to public buildings general fund account to replace the garden shed at Mobile Japanese Garden. Thirty-seven-four-sixteen and four-seventeen are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to PS Taco on South McGregor Avenue and for special events retail liquor license to LS Charitable Cornhole, John Counts Road. Forty-four-eighteen, four-nineteen, four-twenty, four-twenty-one, four-twenty-two, four-twenty-three are declaring the structures at seventeen oh-four Butler Street, seventeen sixty-seven La Grande Drive, eighteen fifteen Pleasant Avenue, fifteen seventy Orange Street, twelve sixty Down Street, eleven oh-nine State Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Forty-four-twenty-four, four-twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and four-thirty are fixing the cost for demolition of structures at twenty-four thirteen Cone Street, twenty-seven twenty-one Harper Avenue, one oh-six Michael Donald Avenue, three twenty-four Lexington Avenue, eleven oh-three Mont Circle West, twenty-six twenty Halls Mill Road, and eight oh-one and a half Kentucky Street. Forty-six four-thirty-one, honorarily renamed Commerce Boulevard, South Honorary Victor Birch Memorial Way. Fifty-eight four-thirty-two, assess cost for removal of weeds, repeat weed lean group fifty-nine. Sixty-four thirty-three and four-thirty-four are approving award a special bonus to the firefighter of the month and the officer of the month. Sixty-four thirty-five, four-thirty-six, four-thirty-seven are determining appropriations to Dearborn YMCA Association, Inc., Alabama Big Ten Mayor's Association, and Project Thrive Serve a Public Purpose and Approving Payment. Thirty-one four-forty-two, authorize partnership with Alabama Department of Environmental Management to submit a pre-proposal application to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation's twenty-twenty-three America the Beautiful Challenge for Brookley by the Bay in Arlington Park, five million dollars.
So moved.
Second.
They're proffered moving second and in discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
Regarding item forty-six four-thirty-one, it's to honorarily rename Commerce Boulevard, Victor Birch Memorial Way. Victor Birch, for those of you who do not know, was a very instrumental member of our community who was very much involved with the running community and particularly the Blue Bell Bombers. And I believe every Sunday, they run through this area in the city, and they suffered greatly when tragically Victor Birch lost his life not long ago. I've been in contact with the family, as well as many of the runners and the runner community, running community, and they are very happy to see this being done, and maybe it will help in forever preserving the memory of such a great citizen of the community. Most folks know him very well as their mailman. He delivered my mail for years. So we look forward to having a small ceremony with everybody come out and unveil the renaming of this road.
Mr. Reynolds, a great honor for a great person. Good. Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced. Zero-eight-four-thirty-eight through thirty-seven forty-one.
My council rules these resolutions will lay over for one week.
Announcements.
District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight at six P.M. at the James Still Recreation Center, or as we older people call it, the Texas Street Rec, we will be hosting a community meeting to talk solely about annexation and about the PFM study. The administration will be there along with several others from the community. Please bring all your questions, your concerns, anything that you'd like to discuss or have answers to. We will hear every concern, we will hear every question, and we will respond to the best of our ability with the information that we have, and as truthfully and as transparent as we can possibly be on this issue. I encourage anyone that wants to come, if you live in District Two, please come, it's important to us, but if you're outside of District Two and you want to hear it, my meetings are open to anyone and everyone. The doors open, we're here to be transparent, we're here to be honest. See everyone at six P.M. tonight. Now, moving on to the next, there was an MHDC ordinance on the agenda that was laid over for conversation and to find common ground between the Preservation Society, the MHDC, and the council as we move forward. We've gotten pretty close to that. The members of the Preservation Society have asked for a meeting. We will get that scheduled as quickly as possible. I'm looking to have it scheduled within the next two weeks, hopefully the first of May. I don't want to let this linger too long so that we can get it out to the entire community. So that is on the MHDC and the Preservation Ordinance, looking somewhere around the first of May, maybe the first Tuesday in May. I think that is the second. So we'll see if we can get that out to everyone. Please be reminded, check my Facebook page, my Twitter account, my, any social media for dates. Also, follow me via the City Tech Service, please, and you'll get direct text from District Two on anything that's going on that you need to know about. Thank you, Mr. President. That's the end of District Two's announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. District Five, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a meeting, a joint meeting for District Five and District Seven residents concerning annexation on May first, that's Monday, May first, at six o'clock P.M. at Mobile Museum of Art Langen Park. Look forward to answering any questions that residents may have at that time. I've got that right, and I'm, Ms. Gregory. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
District Four and Six will have a joint community meeting regarding annexation, discussion of the PFM study, on April twenty-seventh at six P.M. at the Connie Hudson Center. Look forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you, Councilman Reynolds. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you. For the people who live along Howell's Ferry Road near Orchard Elementary School, you've probably seen some heavy equipment and some work going on. These will be, this will be sidewalk construction linking Princeton Woods up to Summer Place. At this point, that's as far as we're going, mainly because this is where so many of the children live who walk to school to Orchard Elementary. This has been a long-requested amenity for the area, and we're happy to be able to provide that. For everybody who does live along Howell's Ferry, or if that's your main route back and forth to work or to school, also be aware that resurfacing will get going out there. It won't happen while the sidewalks are under construction, but it will be coming. Howell's Ferry is one of the places, one of the roads where I get the most requests for resurfacing, and I'm happy that we're able to do that. It is coming with the pay-as-you-go program, so it will be coming later on this summer. A couple of events coming up, of course, Councilman Davis mentioned our meeting on May first, but also this Saturday, you heard about Earth Day, we will be having an Earth Day celebration at the Charles Woods Japanese Gardens on Saturday. It begins at ten o'clock. The Japanese Gardens is located at Forest Hill and Ziegler Boulevard. If you have never been to the Japanese Gardens, you are missing out on a real treat. It is a wonderful location to come and visit, to see all of the different varieties of flowers and trees. There's, there are ponds, and it's also the trailhead for the Greenway Trail. So come on out and enjoy it, be with us for the Earth Day event on Saturday at ten o'clock. Then on Sunday, we will be recognizing our fire department heroes at the fire station at McGregor and Museum Drive, that's the Spring Hills Fire Station. We will be there at three o'clock, lots of food, games, and again, recognition of our firefighters. It is open to the public. We hope to see you there, three o'clock on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory, and greetings to the citizens of District Three. On this coming Thursday at six o'clock P.M., April the twentieth, we will have our Riverside Baptist Church D.I.P. Tithes Meeting, inviting all the citizens on South End of D.I.P. to please come out this coming Thursday at six o'clock P.M. We will be talking about the Tithes and the future of D.I.P. Again, we invite all the citizens on South D.I.P. to come out this coming Thursday. On the next Thursday, April twenty-seventh, at six o'clock P.M., we will have our initiation of PFM questioning and answer period at the Craighead Elementary School, which is located at one thousand South End Street. Again, that will be on next Thursday, April the twenty-seventh, at six o'clock P.M. at the Craighead Elementary School. Is there anything from the administration? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Proffered moving second and in discussion. All in favor? All opposed?